So I'm going to open the meeting. Uh, I would call like to call the October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five meeting uh to order. Three states that are religious.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the holy Father, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Okay, do we have any?
Hi, I'm Shannon Sterling with the Reach Committee. And this morning I am presenting the Employee of the Month Award for December. Um, Melanie Highsmith. You were nominated. Melanie headed up the entire museum renovation from start to finish. This was a huge undertaking and if we if you haven't been to see it, please do come for a visit. The floor plan and exhibits have been completely redone. And she was able to accomplish this, yes, with a lot of help, but with largely her design plan in addition to her regular museum duties. This includes giving historical presentations to community groups, designing upcoming school field trips, among other activities, and completing the museum renovation. Melanie has turned her attention to contacting area fourth grade teachers about our annual Wolf House field trips, which were conducted over three weeks at the end of April, beginning of May. This involves securing enough volunteers to staff the rooms, writing scripts for the volunteers to follow, putting together goodie bags for each of the classes, and in general, making sure everything ran smoothly. In short, Melanie deserves to be recognized for all the work she has done to make Riley County Historical Museum a place of interest for which the county can take pride. So if you'd like to come up, I have this.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, and one, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, uh, any other public comment? Same, no, go to commission comments.
Uh, Friday morning, um, had coffee with my fellow CEO of Honey Mental Health. Um, had some coffee at Light Crew and discuss some items of relevance to the organization. Uh, just the local state of mental health and the needs and challenges uh we're all faced with. Dialogue with Will, um, think there'll be a couple of items to follow up on as we move forward. Uh, Saturday, of course, watched K-State, BKU over in Lawrence. And then the game was not close. Um, contrary to popular belief there, um, win mark seventeen straight in the series. Um, Governor Spence stays in Manhattan where it belongs. And Wildcats even upped their record at four and four. Really other than that, there was not much going on over the weekend. Kind of enjoying this fall like temperatures and weather and I get our first freeze here at the end of the week, I don't know. Kind of get it close. And I'm still kind of crazy to look out here at the end of October and see everything still green, trees included, so. It's kind of, I guess, anyway, that's all I've got.
Okay. Well, let's say, hmm, uh, last Thursday, I hadn't reported before. I attended the Chambers Policy Breakfast. Guest speaker was Dr. Lynn from K-State. He did a report on student enrollment, building progress, et cetera. And then that evening I met with Jake Hanson, County Councilor in Keats, to finish up a list of people who need to sign easements for the Levine Project. We had good luck finding people home and were able to get some signatures and answered various questions. So, uh, we still have some property owners to contact, but we are making really good progress. Uh, Friday morning, I met with David Adams at his office. He went over a proposal given to him on restructuring one of our departments. More study needs to happen on that issue. Then afterwards, I came to my office to do some work, but couldn't get into my office. Um, I couldn't get the door unlocked. It's a key problem, which I've had since we came here. So I brought, on Sunday after church, I brought some WD-40 over. It's working kinda, you know, it still needs to be ground downers. Several, several times I was supposed to be getting a new one, but um, anyway. Then that afternoon, I met with a small group of constituents who wanted updates on some of our projects. Uh, good discussion, I'll meet with them again for some more, some more information. Um, Saturday, several friends came to my house to watch K State, K State, KU football game. It was really exciting with a great score. I don't think anybody was expecting that, so. Um, and Sunday I played in a bell choir for church in the afternoon. Um, reviewing today's agenda and documents. That's it.
Okay.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the highway use permit granted WTC. It says, uh, AT and T, um, policy. Yeah, it's there now, but yesterday it was. Anyway, okay, um, um, uh, mega motion approval of highway use permit granted WTC permission for cloud fiber optic cable is outlawed in the plans.
Oh, second.
Been moved in second to approve the highway use permit granting WTC permission to bore cloud fiber optic cable is outlawing plans, all in favor?
And do you move to approve the mobile device reimbursement request forms?
Would make a motion to approve the mobile reimbursement request forms.
No, second then.
Been moved in second to approve the, uh, mobile device reimbursement request, all in favor?
Employee action forms for Ellen Dunston, a volunteer firefighter, separate chief service. Samuel Myers, David Myers, Isaac Simpkins, and Brad Stetson, fourth department. And Audrey Chris, a museum intern in the museum department, separation.
Yeah, I would make a motion to, um, um, approve the request of Ryan County employee action.
Oh, second.
Been moved in second to approve the request of Ryan County employee action forms, all in favor?
Aye.
And discuss the county.
Plus we want to talk about legislative topics again, uh, on a fourth.
When do we do one last?
It's been a little long.
Yeah, so it's been, yeah, we did.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was.
Yeah, we did, we, we. It's good to get together, Tom. Anybody?
Eighty-five years.
Okay. I don't have anything. Uh, I didn't have anything. Uh, I make a motion to approve the minutes as written from the October twenty-third meeting of the Ryan County Commission.
I would second that.
New to second to approve minutes of the October twenty-third meeting, all in favor?
Aye. Jesus, the minutes.
Are you going to the intergovernmental motion?
Yes.
Are you gonna speak on that? This has my name on it, the Certified Public Manager Program. If you need to go, okay.
Yeah, I was planning on going to support that.
If you could, yeah, you know more about it than I do.
Yeah.
If you weren't going, I was gonna need a class after this.
Well, you're in discussing one of the two of us, yes.
Okay.
I wrote you a script for it. Oh, wow. Oh, that would be good. Don't you forget, I'm gonna announce that's very.
She's my speechwriter.
Questions?
It's something you see personally now.
I think it's good, I mean, it's a good idea. I need somebody with more knowledge than me.
Well, he thought I was, he wasn't aware of this, but it's hard to understand. Yeah, and I don't think it's a long topic. But it was sent very early, yeah, a lot of things during the election, so I did. But I don't finalize the release by the end of next year, so.
Because the board is showing that they're standing.
Here this first is.
Yeah, I think maybe the, yeah, that's been.
So I'm sure. Which, yeah, registration.
Yeah, I think we got registration.
Cold, smelling, smell of the air conditioning.
Yeah. They were sitting there, sitting. Some church, you know, when it feels like the air conditioning is blowing, I was thinking, it's, it's the end of our fellowship. This is a, this is a thing that.
This is, this is.
Okay.
No, I'll check, no, I have to check.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be.
Yeah.
I'll check those.
Okay.
Yeah, very good transfer.
Okay, yeah, so. Very.
Fine.
Good morning. Mister's. Things are going. Well, we've gotten our new employees are now been there for a couple of weeks. We hired two. Yeah. They're. I think they're gonna do really, really well. Yeah, and so certainly. We're now off the full staff, and that's always appreciated when we're up full staff, though it's been since June that we've been fully staffed, so. Trials, we've been busy with trials. Probably read about some of them. Christina Trocheck was in trial for five out of seven weeks. Beginning in in August and had successful results in those. Trini Muth will be in trial starting next week for through December, so several trials he has coming up, so. We're trying to move cases as efficiently and as effectively as we can at this point, but we're just, you know, homicide, attempted homicide cases, and we does take time. Um, we do have a leak in our roof. We discovered. Maybe you've heard about that, but we have a water started coming in Friday, and I know John Ellerman's been advised of it, and they're seeing what they can do to get that situation resolved. But. Uh. Going to mention, I've been working, or Vivian's been doing most of the work, but I really appreciate her assistance. We're having a big conference here next week. Former roommate of mine, an undergraduate. Dr. Layton is a psychiatrist at the Washington State University. Uh, and two, two aspects, mental illness and drug addiction. He specializes in treating drug addiction. And he's going to, we're gonna present at the Manhattan Public Library on November eighth, if I've got that correct.
Six.
Sixth. Yeah. So we'll be there, and I believe that the commission have all received invitations, but he's, well, I'm a little biased, but not only is he psychiatrist, he went and got a PhD in pharmacology so he could understand kind of the chemistry behind the addiction process and behind the narcotics, so. Um. But Vivian really helped kind of put that together and get it out to everybody, so I want to let the commission know, appreciate all the work that she's done on that. Working with me isn't the easiest, I think Vivian would tell you. Personality, part schedule, but anyway, I appreciate her patience and want you to know that she really did a fantastic job and nothing me. With that, I don't really have anything else. Let us stand for any questions. Comments or criticisms. Up here for all three.
Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Could we shut the door down because it's really been children here. Don't you okay? Are you good?
I'm so. Uh, that's fine. Call him. It's just.
I know I'm calling my child. Adam knows.
That's a much harsh stuff.
I'm doing it later. It's. Which I was like.
Issues a lot.
That's what I see. So much. We each other. So I asked them, they're like, oh, no. Great, they're really great. It's that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
There is.
Some of those. I thought you was looking perfect. Bye, this person. She'd be like, huh. It's like. This is. It looks like. He's like. Like.
Eighty next, off next day. Close. Close. Next. He's gonna be. Same.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll last. Oh, they haven't given. Me see. I was saying. Yes.
Guys.
We'll save the six running.
It was.
Wow. I didn't think go through with that. So LSU firing Brian Kelly. Oh, that fifty-three million dollars. How do you hire? Ah, you got a lot of money down there. Very confusing. So. So do that. I mean, I. Quite a dozen. Discount. It's still concerning to the coaches, which is. Exactly. Well, it's like, it's. For them, they've got money, so they're gonna recruit five-star anything regardless of who's there, so. But then. It feels like everything. Very. Yes, like. It's the. Somebody's. You know. I'm. You're getting fired for fifty million dollars. Couldn't mind it. He's sixty, almost sixty-five or something, so. Yeah. Guess I. Guess I'm unemployed. Tire off. Squeeze. Making me see me more. I'm.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, good morning, Commissioner Elizabeth Ward, Human Resources Director, and I have for discussion today the travel and study pay, the compensation for travel and study policy. Um, I, what I tried to do here is give an overview in this, in this section about what this policy is intended for and then what it includes the major points, and so really, we've obviously been paying for required travel and required study in the past. What we've done is we followed the Federal Labor Standards Act guideline, which requires employees, non-exempt employees, to be paid during their scheduled work hours when traveling. And also outside of their scheduled work hours when they are driving or required to work while traveling. So that's been our policy up to this point, and we have not had a policy on study time, and when I talk about study time, I mean approved or required courses that someone is required to take and then may need study time outside of that course time. So the department heads have gone through this over several months, really, trying to nail in all of those different parts. You can see here that these are the things that we're intending to cover, so which expenses are authorized or allowable when you are traveling, which expenses are not allowable. Um, sometimes there's people who combine personal and business travel, so if they go somewhere, the conference starts on a Monday, they might go on a Friday or Saturday, and so you know, how do we navigate that, which we have been doing and have been allowing, but this will give us more of a guide to do so. And then compensation and travel. You can see here that what the department heads have brought to propose to you is this portion, the employee is, if, I'm sorry, travel is not compensable, so we don't pay it outside of a standard schedule unless the employee is required to drive a vehicle. Um, or the employee is performing authorized work during travel time. So this would still mean if employees left, let's say their normal schedule is eight AM, they leave at six AM to get to a conference, unless their director has had told them to work in the car, and they may have applicable work, they are not paid until their normal schedule. This is, it does go along with the federal standard guidelines. And the reason that we kind of came to that portion is because it gives the department head the authority to require work, so if, if, for example, I'm riding in a vehicle and I'm, you know, on Facebook or playing a video game or reading my personal book, I'm not being paid. If, however, my department head says, yeah, you need to do, there's team building activities, there's work on your computer, there's whatever the project is, then the department has the ability to pay during that time period and get work done. Um. But if, but then if also I'm going on a, let's say I go on a Sunday evening, um, because my conference starts at six AM, I'm not getting paid on Sunday, and I'm not getting paid Sunday evening when I'm not working, because that's where it kind of can get sticky of what is work and non-work, so the department head will have that, that authority in this proposal. And then study time is the other part that we've kind of really tried to hammer out. Um, if it is related to their job, you can see non-exempt employees are paid for approved, required study or coursework directly related to their job. So if there is study time outside of the normal hours, um, it has to be approved prior, and it has to be documented, which means a note on their time card saying, you know, this is for XYZ class. Um. None of this really applies to exempt employees because that's all considered part of our job as exempt employees, um, minimum of forty hours and those kinds of things. Um. The also, there's a portion in here that does suggest or recommend to the department heads that schedules be altered to avoid overtime and if possible, altered to include study time, so if the person has a class from ten to noon, do they have the ability to study for an hour during their workday? Or is the only option to be, you know, at seven PM after their workday ends? Um, and we didn't have this part, this is a little bit different, it's not about pay, but we didn't have this part expressly stated anywhere else um, about the insurance coverage on official business, and then obviously we always said the accidents must be reported. There is also a portion in the full document. There is also a portion in the full document that recommends travel insurance. Um, when someone is purchasing commercial travel, and that's something that the finance office has recommended for. Quite a while, like at least all of Brittany's time here, um, and I believe previously, but it hadn't been stated that that's our our policy. So those are the main changes and purposes. If I do, I did include the entire document. Um, but this executive overview, that's that's this part. So. Um, there's no direct fiscal impact. Um, most of it isn't going to be a change to what we have been practicing, but we'll. Clarify it so that all departments are on the same path. So definitely open for questions or comments or.
I have questions. Um, do we have the ability and um. And web or computerized system that supervisors can can log in and see if the employees are actually working those hours?
Like on their, if they're on their laptop?
Yeah. On the job.
So the supervisor does not have that ability, but IT does. Um, and we have done those investigations, and then there's been a. Uh, reasonable suspicion of of dishonesty. Um, if someone puts work time in their time card and is not working, that is. It is definitely against policy and it's stealing from the county, and so we take that very seriously. But we, what we tend to do is trust but verify. So. If my work's getting done and they see it being turned in, generally, the supervisor isn't inquisitive of that. But if I'm saying that I'm working a lot of hours and I'm not getting the product. Many times we'll look into that.
But I choose the ability to go back and look at. Logins and that kind of.
They do. Yeah, yeah, they're like, if it's with their um Riley County. Uh, so if you have a, you know, we even have iPads and those things out there. So if it's with that equipment, they can look into that. And some of it, um, you know, I don't know for sure if that would apply to all study modules, you know, I don't know for sure because that would be a different system, but. Um, the supervisors, Anna's here, and she's one who has sent a lot of people to class and they have a lot of required study. And so she's been very active in this um in this role, but she also knows when someone is not studying and they, she looks at the pass fail rates for the classes too, and then. You know, whether there's a pattern there and whether there's an issue.
That's. Me, I mean, the biggest one, yes, is that the problem with study time?
Mm hmm.
What is it right now?
Um, so right now, there's nothing stated, and most departments and what we've recommended is study is on an employee's own time. Um, I think there's a fair argument in in my HR perspective, I think there's a fair argument to say that. The employees, we are getting something out of getting to go to that course. I mean, I understand that it's required for my job. But I'm also growing uh professionally and preparing myself for uh promotion. So I think there is a fair argument, and it is legal not to pay people for extra study time. But across the board, the department heads felt like that was an important aspect because they're requiring people. To go to this class and they're requiring them to pass it in order to keep their job or potentially make the next, it's it's a. For some job, it's a requirement um to continue in your job.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's part of your job. That's many. You need steady under them, that's. That's if it happens in a lot of jobs.
It does. I Anna would like to speak. I don't know if you want. Yeah.
I just would like to share a little bit kind of where that study times coming into play is. We have courses that are pretty intense courses that do require actual homework from the course instructor. And so on your hourly employees, if they're being required to do work outside of time, it has always been my understanding that. That's compensated time because they are required to do it. On their own time. So class ends at five, they are then required to work through the reviews, complete them and review them with the whole class that next day. I understand it is a benefit and a perk to have the education, but it's also a requirement. Like I cannot have employees in the roles in the appraiser's office if they do not successfully pass these courses. And some of them are very intense, and they do require study time outside of the office, which is part of why when we are adjusting schedules. They're studying on their way, they're studying if they have, if they have a long lunch, they're using that time. Outside outside of their lunchtime. So if they get an hour and a half for lunch, they take a half hour lunch. Another hour on the clock is doing their reviews, doing their time. We try to ensure there isn't any overtime as it pertains to that. So really. Maximizing the extra time they're given while those classes are happening. Um, just to ensure that successful completion. So I don't know if that really addresses any of those questions, but I figured I.
How much time is involved?
Uh, it depends on the course. So like with an I double A, I double A O course, I can tell you that. They should use every free moment they have. If they get that hour and a half lunch, they should be using their thirty minute lunch and that extra hour. Studying, filling out the reviews, the car ride home. Um, so it kind of depends on if it's local. Which would be Topeka, so forty five minutes, they have forty five minutes in the car, that that's what I'm telling them. You do your reviews, you talk to each other, you study on your way back. If it's in Wichita, they have. Time because they're not traveling, you know, with the lunch in the morning, classes sometimes will start a little later at eight. So when our normal workday is at seven thirty, I'm like, get there a half an hour early, clock in. Do those reviews, do that extra studying. I try to avoid anything beyond a normal work schedule. And again, ensure that there is no overtime, that they're studying during that schedule. So we really minimize anything outside of that. Additional, um, really, it does depend on the course, though. Um, all of the I double A O courses are very intense courses. I would not allow any overtime on some of the PBD related courses. The time that we allow kind of through lunch or the extended, um, you know, the travel when they're studying during that travel time. Um, those are opportunities for them to study. So there's no overtime as it pertains to the the studying besides potentially on the occasional I double A O course.
How how often do they take this?
They are required. Um, so like with me and with the designation, we do have to have um so many tested hours. Um, and so there's one oh one, one oh two, the three hundred, maybe once a year. Potentially twice for the new employees as we're trying to get them through that coursework. Once they have the course and they've successfully completed it. Unless they have a designation, they wouldn't necessarily need to retake it. I recommend, if it's been seven to ten years since they've taken one of them, sometimes it's good to go back and take a refresher. But usually, once they've successfully completed it, unless they have a designation like myself and some of my um senior positions. Then it's not a requirement to keep taking those courses. So. A lot of the PVD courses wouldn't necessarily require, you know, study time outside of like the lunch and the travel, which is, which is what we do right now. Um, they're expected to do that during um during that travel.
No, they're not. They're not driving while they're.
No, absolutely not. The drivers are not. The. The the drivers are driving and the 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 others in the car and yeah, you know.
Drivers get paid for driving.
The drivers are paid for driving. And so that brings up another valid point, that the driver may need additional time outside of that. Um, to do a little bit more studying, but for the most part, again, we really try to minimize that. Um, and be very strategic in who's driving.
Mm hmm.
And.
So I do want to make two points on that. First of all, Anna is very, very, very good at managing this. She is very clear that they need to study. Um, there are several conferences who have had an hour and a half lunch. The hurt the staff knows that they get a scheduled half an hour and they need to be studying during that time. Not every department is that um. That has that same conception of how work and studying and classes should go. So part of our our intention here is to get it consistent across the board. I have supervisors, uh, department heads who have said they will manipulate the day. Um, in order to get the person paid. Uh, so for example, if I have, if I'm an hourly employee and I have a conference starting. On Tuesday, they will encourage me to drive in the middle of the day on Monday and have the entire evening off instead of. So that I can be paid instead of working, which I I gotta tell you is just like, maybe I'm old school, I got this traditional perspective, but I. What we tend to do in our office and what I've always done is work the day, drive the evening, be there for the course and be happy that my employer is paying for the course. So. I want, I want you to be, understand that not everyone manages it as the same as. As Anna does. And then secondarily, with the driver itself, we do encourage, first of all, that the um exempt staff drive. And or that it's rotated. Um, so this is RCPD does this, um, at least they don't pay, they don't actually pay for study. But they do this with the um driver, they only pay the driver. Uh, and they just have the group that's going rotate around so that. One guy doesn't get paid every single time.
They take those classes, we pay for the classes or?
We do.
Yeah.
And the conferences and all of it.
By comparison, teachers are required to have so many hours to keep their certificates. Not only do they not get paid for the time because it's during the evening, so that we, you know, I know that.
They pay.
Yes. They pay for the class, which, you know, they pay for the class and study on their own time. That's part of the job.
Yeah. And again, I have this HR perspective, which I tend to agree with you, but we do have a lot of department heads. Who felt like the study time was important. So I think I think it's a, I in my mind. It affects a lot of people here at the county, and it also affects our citizens. So it may be. Something you want to consider, or I can have other department heads come and speak to you. Um, I don't want to rush your decision, but I think your points are valid.
I'm with Craig on that.
But we, and if we have consensus, I can edit it and bring back an altered version.
Well, how would, how would you help that?
Well, I just, I guess.
Write the whole thing and.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is I would take out the study time compensation. I would say. And I want to know for sure if that's what you guys want, but what I'm hearing is that the compensation for travel. Is potentially okay, but the compensation for study is something that should be removed and be non compensable, not paid. And again, I can have, like I said, there are other perspectives. Anna was not the only perspective. I. I know Diane just walked in, uh, so I don't want to put you on the spot, but she was a person who also, her department has asked about this for years before Diane came on and has felt. Strongly about it. Um, I mean, I could have other department heads. We could, I could write something, I could draft something of their opinions, I could have them come, or I can just take it out, I think. Whatever you guys want to do here. Or we can table it and you can think about it. I don't know if there's other options. Does that cover the damage? Yeah.
Definitely. Not going to vote to approve it today. We can table it. Think about it and read, you know, see what modifications you can do or something.
Sure. I mean, I'm more than happy to modify that study time particularly. Um, I'm also, I did bring with me the FLSA guidelines about work hours. I could email that to you if you're. I don't know that it helps. It's very. I mean, it is very basic on it, but it's also very clear on what is required to be paid for travel.
Well, you know. I don't want to distress our employees, you know, upfront, but you know. If it is part of the profession, it's it's important that they study.
It is important to study. You can't agree.
As fast as she studies, so I don't, you know, I don't see why that's paid for.
Hmm.
To maybe tape, so I guess I just need clear direction. Do you want to table as is and consider it? Do you want me to bring back a secondary proposal?
But if we leave the study time, I can find. I'd say.
All right, I will, I will make those edits and I will bring it back for you all to discuss again. All right, thank you. I appreciate your time. And then, of course, there's that.
The. Here.
That okay, go ahead and start. All right. Good morning, commissioners. I'm Susan Buller. I'm the Elections Manager for Riley County. And I just wanted to go over advanced voting hours. We are open this week, Riley County Office Building, one ten Courthouse Plaza on the second floor. Our hours, we will be open this week, our Monday through Thursday. From seven thirty until five PM. Will be open this Friday, seven thirty until noon. This Saturday, November first, we'll have advanced voting open for the public, um, Riley County registrants from eight AM until noon. And then our last day for advanced voting will be a week from today on Monday, November third, from seven thirty until noon. And then we'll close in preparation for Election Day. Um, so far, we have had seven hundred and ninety six. Registrants come in and cast their ballot using advanced voting. The numbers broken down are, we have a hundred and eighteen returned mail ballots, six hundred and sixty five have chosen to come in person to vote. And then we've had thirteen provisionals. Which is less than two percent. So, um, on Election Day, we'll be open from seven AM to seven PM. Registrants will go to their polling place to vote. Anybody who's interested in where they vote can visit Kansas Voter View. They can Google it that way, or they can visit our elections webpage on our county website, and it has a voter view link. They'll put in their last name, first name and date of birth, and it brings up their specific information to include their sample ballot. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Yes. Hold up. Do you make a motion? Do we recesses the Board of County Commission and re, uh, well, actually, just the means that I know.
Uh, I would second that.
Good noon and second is recesses of Board of County Commissioners and conveners in health home favor.
Hi.
Hey, good morning, Caitlin Spath.
Diane Creed.
Okay.
Head Director.
Um, so we are here to just give a update on status of WIC during the shutdown. So last Thursday. Mentioned that KDHE was hosting another meeting um that afternoon, so I attended that. KDHE said that uh they filled out a needs assessment for the USDA uh for additional funds uh during the shutdown. They expect that there won't be any notifications about additional awards until the last minute. Um, just to avoid giving emergency funds in case there's a resolution that is passed. Um, local agencies should know this week, though, what our first allocation amount for November will be. So hopefully, when I come back on Thursday, I'll have have that amount. Uh, and then. Otherwise, those meetings are just to provide an opportunity for local agencies to talk about what. Uh, we're seeing uh with our clients. There is a lot of conversation on Thursday about the impact of uh SNAP benefits. Um, not being issued for November. And so we're getting more client or more clients telling about if WIC will be impacted with that decision. Um, and we're probably going to see an increased need once those SNAP benefits are are not turned on.
I said last night, it's not coming for sure, so.
Yeah.
Anticipating it.
Yeah, so it takes two to four days uh to shut down the EBT processor side. So yeah, if nothing happens by tomorrow. Definitely November first won't go out for for SNAP. WIC will still, um. WIC issues based off of when we certify our client, so it's not October first or November first or for their WIC benefit dates. It's based off of the date that we actually certify the client. Um, and then Friday, Diane and I met with Carla from the Bread Basket. They're looking at uh potential funding sources to cover infant formula. If the shutdown were to continue and there would be um limited WIC food funds. Um, so we are, we are looking at that too. That's an update that I have for you today.
Good. Keep trying.
All right, yep.
Okay, I have a little bit of good news for you guys. Um, on October twentieth. Uh, Riley County got a notification from KDHE that they are awarding us sixty nine thousand, six hundred and fifty five. Additional funding dollars for the family planning. Program. Um, so this will bring our total state fiscal year twenty six funding. Uh, from KDHE to three hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and fifty seven dollars. Um, so what we'll use that funding for is for salaries, obviously, which is uh the bulk of our uh budgets. So I just need, um, if you agree with this funding, then I just need to sign you guys. The addendum.
Sounds good.
It's a good thing. Well, I would make a motion to. Excuse me. Uh, to approve the amendment for the additional um sixty nine thousand, six hundred and fifty five dollars for family funding services from KDH.
Uh, second that.
Remove and seconded for an additional sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars from K D H E for family. Family services, all in favor.
Right. Thank you.
Go ahead and make a motion and recesses the Board of County Health and then reconvene to the Board of County Commission.
I would second that.
Remove and seconded recesses Board of Health and reconvene to Board of Commissioners, all in favor.
Good morning, commissioners. Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, here to present the gift card policy. Um, I didn't make any updates from our conversations on Thursday, so there's, um. No changes. This is the same, um, presentation as Thursday, and I stand for any questions on this one.
Do you have any questions?
Me either.
So what? We need to actually approve it, is that what it is?
Yes, yeah.
Go ahead and make a motion then to approve the Riley County gift policy, uh, as presented.
Remove and seconded to approve the gift card policy represented, all in favor.
Thank you. Um, the next item I have is the P card policy. And so I did update a couple of things from our discussion on Thursday. So we put in there that, um, an employee cannot personally. Receive reward points, um, for any purchases. If rewards are earned, they should be in the name of Riley County. And under internet purchase, purchasing, we added verbiage stating personal email should not be utilized when ordering. May I stand for any questions?
If this stuff we discussed last.
Yep. Yep.
And well, I would make the question to approve the P card policy as you thought.
Remove and seconded to approve the P card policy introduced, all in favor.
Thank you. So what I'll do with both of those is I'll send them out to employees. Um, I think I'll probably work with Elizabeth or Vivian to get it on pay velocity, uh, to have them acknowledge it. And then I'll work with department heads, probably for more staff training on P cards. Um, and just have, you know, groups set up so we can get everybody retrained on those, on the additions.
The auditor is aware of these changes too, right?
Yes.
Okay. We have two. So you're also.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it's doing probably.
Was that the, the, the early?
I think I want it for whether it will be.
For the sunshine, the true weather.
In the machine colors.
That's interesting.
That sounds.
I guess.
Good morning, commissioners. Megan Lewis with Community Corrections. I am here for our monthly staff update. I think it is bigger. Okay, so to start out, um, for juvenile intake and assessment. We had ten intakes in the month of September and seven of those were returned to a parent or guardian. Three were placed with a family, friend or relative. For our immediate intervention program. We did not have any referrals in the month of September. Um, the county attorney's office has actually been going through a pretty decent transition. The person who would refer those cases left, I believe in August, and that position had been vacant. They recently filled it. They started last week. So we, we foresee getting a number of in, um, intakes or referrals in the next couple of weeks, just to catch up. For our juvenile intensive supervision, we currently have fifteen on. Um, between our intensive supervision, our juvenile correctional facility kiddos, conditional release. And the kiddos that are courtesy souped out or transferred in from other states. In adult services, we have a total of a hundred and thirteen. That includes ninety-five that are reporting for intensive supervision. One within inpatient treatment and seventeen in jail. The Adult Recovery Court Program had sixteen participants in September. Fifteen of those were in Riley County and one was in Clay County. To date, we've had sixty-one participants in the program. Nineteen graduates from the Riley County Program and eight graduates from the Clay County Program. Eighteen individuals have been removed or revoked for various reasons. And we currently are scheduled for our next recovery court graduation on November twelfth at three o'clock. And that leads me to the conversation I wanted to have. I wanted to share with you an opportunity that Community Corrections has on the juvenile services side. About a program called Repath. Repath is a smartphone application. That the Kansas Department of Corrections has paid a contract to provide for all intensive supervision juveniles, um, in the state of Kansas. So. What, what that means is they would have an app on their electronic device that would help with supervision. So. It would provide tracking, it would be a reporting. Another tool where they could message their officer and they could text back and forth. It had, would have reminders on it, so we could set alerts and reminders for court. For treatment, for appointments, different ways to help, um. Get them into compliance and maintain compliance and also a way to show the courts that they're doing good. Because when they are doing all of those things, that, that shows that they're being held accountable and they're doing what they're supposed to and hopefully staying out of trouble. Some things that it does as well is it's an alternative, alternate to detention. So if we're utilizing it the way that it's designed. Potentially, we could be keeping those kiddos out of detention and picking up more charges. Um. It is curfew compliance, so we can set, can set parameters on it to where they. They have to be home by a certain time. It sends an alert and then they have to, they push a button basically. And they take a picture of themselves and that sends us a coordinate and tells us if they're home or not and they're in by curfew. It will also let us know if they leave home after curfew and they're out kind of running around and stuff. So it's a. An opportunity to use some A I features that we haven't used in the past. And in order to utilize this service, we have been in communication. We have been in communication with um the Chief Stud, Stud Banister, and recently. Uh, we did a presentation to JCAP last week, as well as we received his approval that we can start implementing the program. So. We will start making that part of our standard conditions of supervision moving forward, and we will. Work to modify the current individuals that are on supervision for juvenile services as well. Okay. Um, the other things I wanted to talk to you about is we have a new ISO one out of our Clay County Office. Her name is Emma Laland, and she started today. She actually has served as a juvenile intake officer for a little over the past year, and then she served as an intern in our office. Um, the second semester of last um school year. So we have hired her full time, and she started today. Another thing I wanted to make sure that you are aware of. With the government shutdown, we have our BJA grant. We received that extension. So far to date, the automated standard application for payment system has been operational. We've been able to do drawdowns. Um, in a timely manner and get our money, our reimbursement funds back, so we haven't had any issues. That being said. We have met with Brittany and Elizabeth just to develop kind of a plan and an idea of. If we went to do that drawdown and, and it was shut down, what, what's our next steps? And what, what is that? Expense each month. So we are working with them, and we will get that together and present that to you, just so you are well informed about that. And that is all I have today. Any questions?
We are. It's not something new that's been on there, but on like adult intensive supervision, if they're in the jail. You guys.
Yes, so.
With them and stuff.
A lot of times when they're, when they're in the jail, they still have things that we're trying to communicate with them, whether that's getting them a treatment bed or. Potentially, um, they have assessments that are due or case plans that are due, so we try to communicate back and forth. It doesn't always mean that we get to communicate directly with them. Sometimes when they're in the jail, they have behavior issues. And so they, they don't allow even our staff to come in and, and visit with them, but we do try to keep in communication with them when they are in the jail. Good question.
Yeah.
Any other?
I see that. I just had nervous. But ask.
And it's good to have a plan for when they're released. So if we keep in communication with them, then we can help to develop a plan for that release date so that they're. You know, if they're homeless, we can help find shelter and housing and stuff.
Well, we've got something that used to be in contact with.
Absolutely. We had an individual just Friday that we helped. Um, he was being released, and he was going to interstate compact out of state, and so. We went to the police department, picked him up, and took him to the airport so that it would help kind of facilitate that. He wouldn't miss his flight and. All of that. So we try hard to help them get on track.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Little gang starter.
Yeah, yeah. And you mentioned, so.
Say again.
You got an introduction.
Alrighty, Commissioners Jacob Hanson, Riley County Council.
Yes.
Ah. I'd like to, of course, introduce everybody to our new Assistant County Counselor, uh, Michael Hawthorne.
Nice to meet everyone.
So first day, we got, everything has been going well so far. We got uh our temporary offices that we're in right now, but. Uh, it's still, it's still great to have them. We're, we're excited. Brings a lot of experience and familiarity with the court system around here, and so we definitely plan on, on utilizing that as much as possible. And I've already told Michael that um I am going to be gone as of next week, so. He gets to sit up here with you all and advise you guys on matters that come up before you. Um, trial by fire, I suppose. Um, so. As far as uh any of the specific tasks we have going on, um, you know, you're hearing a lot about Keats lately. Uh, working with Commissioner Fokie on that. Things have been going well. Um, there, there has been. One individual uh that is likely to create hmm difficulties.
Yeah.
Uh, and so we're, we're right now going to try to game plan on how we're going to uh address that, but. Uh, we'll perhaps be coming back at a later date to see what we can do there, but. Um, as far as all the other sixty three properties that are out there in Keats, I mean, we are just a handful short now. Of any that actually we haven't had communication with, which is fantastic. Um, so Keats is going really well. Um, I will also advise that on one of our uh criminal nuisance abatement cases, the one that's going to trial. Uh, has been set for December thirtieth, I believe. Um, we had pre-trial the last week on Friday, in which we won on both of our motions. One is under advisement in the court, so we'll see how that turns out. Uh, but things seem to be progressing well in that area. Um, again, still working with uh property owners on getting diversion agreements in place. We have a couple. Already that are in place, and so that effort continues to uh go well. Um. I believe outside of those matters, any questions for myself or Michael while we're here?
Welcome.
Glad to be here.
Yep. Finally behold again.
Yes. Then we'll, I think six months, somewhere around there, six.
Yeah, it's been about right.
Yeah. All right, thank you, guys.
Don't have anything else to add this morning. No. Start Monday. Okay, I guess with that, then I'll go ahead and make a motion that. We adjourn the October twenty seventh meeting in the Riley County Commissions.
On the second.
Remove and seconded, sure, the October twenty seventh meeting in the County Commission, all in favor.